Yeah.
Ken, this.
All right, good morning, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is, uh... November 12th, uh, 10:00 a.m. It is our quarterly budget meeting. And as... Host in this, on this, uh, board note, uh... We have had a... Departure of our, uh... Board chair. So the first thing we need to do is elect a new board chair.
Were you gonna say the pledge first? Were you gonna say the pledge?
Well, I think, well, I think the board vice chair fills in.
Automatic, okay.
Absence of a chair, yeah.
So you are now the... Running the meeting.
All right, well, this-
Do you have an agenda?
I do, I have it in front of me, so... So, let's, let's get this party started, I guess.
All righty.
Uh, we'll start, uh, we'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I see number two is the, uh... Adoption Amendment of the Agenda. That's the second bullet point here on the Agenda.
I make a motion we adopt the Agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, that is passed. And then, number three, Public Comments. I haven't received any-
We probably should have a vote.
Yeah, they have a vote out.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay.
One further discussion, and then a vote.
Okay, any further discussion? And let's have a vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, next on the Agenda will be Public Comments. I haven't received any requests for Public Comments. Is there anyone here that would like to make any Public Comments? All right, uh, nobody stepped forward, so absent any Public Comments, uh, our next point of business is to approve the minutes from the budget meeting of May 13th, 2019.
I move that we approve the, uh, Budget Committee Meeting Minutes for May 13th.
Question. Question. Do we wanna do these all at once, or can we, or do we need to do them individually?
It's his meeting.
Uh, we'll, we'll knock 'em out individually real quick.
Okay, great, thanks.
I second.
Any further discussion? And a vote?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
And the meeting for May 14th, 2019.
I move that we approve the Budget Committee Meeting Minutes for May 14th.
Second.
Further discussion? And a vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
And May 15th, 2019?
I move that we approve the Budget Committee Meeting Minutes for May 15th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? And a move to vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
And May 16th, 2019?
I move that we approve the Budget Committee Meeting Minutes for May 16th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? And vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And last, but not least...
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Uh... May 17th, 2019?
I move that we approve the Budget Committee Meeting Minutes for May 17th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? And move to vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. All right, J.J.
All right. Uh, moving on, present discussion in action. Overview of the Budget, discuss audits, and discussion of effectiveness.
You can take that timer down off there if you want to, Charlene.
You're not gonna time me?
Mm-mm.
Are they ready to bring us sleeping now? Good morning, uh... Hold on, I'm short. Good morning, everyone. If I can get this to work.
You broke the microphone.
I'm good. Can you guys carry me up and just do this?
I don't know if that one's on. Tap it and see.
What's that?
There you go.
Okay. So, this will be... I'm not sure what's going on here. Okay, I think we're all set now. So, um, the IRS, October News wires, set these objectives for public entities providing, uh, financial services. And I really thought this spoke to the objective of my office, so I wanted to share this concept with you. It says that we make a personal commitment to improve efficiency, modernize our systems, and business processes, and find ways to better serve taxpayers. So that's really what I feel like I'm charged at, and I like the way that they put that. So I wanted to throw that out there for us to use as a commitment for our, um, meeting today. Our agenda on the slideshow is, we get updates from the May 2019 budget meetings. Um, the discussions there and responses for the questions that were posed. Status of the last three years' audits, and actually, after I started preparing this, I think I went back a little bit more. But the slide, the slideshow will do just 2016 forward. The status of the first quarter of 1920. Activities that have taken place since budget adoption. And we'll discuss some proposed solutions. Take notes on there and see how you guys would like to handle that. There is a budget law appropriations, um, challenge than the previous way that the, uh, budget was adopted. And I want to address that and show you the rules on it, so that we can, um, have the next resolution generated that meets those rules. And then, I'll open it for question and answers, and we will discuss some changes that we're looking at for the 21-year, uh, budgeting cycle. And then, I actually made a mistake here. This year invited is an invitation for us to work out the schedule for January for a mid-year review, and for May's new budgeting season together. So, I'll just go right here. These are related to the May budgeting cycle and questions that came up. I'm gonna ask Julie to help me a little bit with some of these. The first item on this was some questions that were generated about the Justice Court.
Sure, one of the ideas that was brought up during the May budget meetings was the possibility of the county having a Justice Court. Um, it was a great idea. Um, Commissioner Pash and, um, one of our Budget Committee members, or one of our other Budget Committee members, Mr. Thody, worked together on that. And, um, basically, we discovered that for our county, it would not be appropriate due to the location of other courts that are happening in the county right now. So it would just, would not make financial sense for us to have a Justice Court at the county level.
Okay. Uh, CDBG grants, uh... CDBG, gotta get my letters in the right order there, sorry. Uh, for the Brookings Head Start Project, the great news is, um... Council Huddle and the previous Finance Director stepped up to better organizing that. The county had had a lot of turnover in that area. And we had a mid-year review. We're doing really good on it with the, um, Business Oregon team. And our CCD Grant Administration has all of our documents in place, and we're looking really good. There's just a couple things that we as a county need to take care of. And that grant cycle will clo- or that grant project will close, uh, February 2020. And I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to see what they've done with that project, but it's a wonderful building. We had to meet the Director when we were down there that's gonna be taking over. She had a little influence on how the building's going to look. And, um, there's a lot of community engagement in that project. Everyone's really proud of it. So it's nice that we were able to use those grant monies for that. We're looking at reaching out to the county for different departments that are interested in applying for that grant next. You could only have one at the same time. And, um... Director Schmelzer and the Commission will be looking for which project we'll move forward with next. There is a new cycle for that, that they weren't expecting, a special award cycle. And it's gonna open next month, and it'll run through, uh, February. And if we can get in on that cycle, then we might be able to start a new project and get it approved before April. The regular season is July, and we would normally have to wait till then. But at this time, we have an opportunity to get ahead of the game a little bit right there. Then we have... Oh, information technology expenses. So our phone systems were challenged and a little archaic. And, uh, our Director worked with IT to come up with a proposal. It looks like it's gonna cost $57,000, and we wanna keep that in our radar when we're doing our budgeting cycle in the spring. That's something that we haven't planned for. Then code enforcement, uh, need for the BOC to endorse hiring a second one, and that has now been done. It's been adopted, uh, the person's been hired, but it was not adopted into this budget cycle. So this is one of the changes that we'll be looking at later in the slideshow. The Sheriff's Office, um, the Budget Committee authorized increase in salary. And he says, "Thank you," he's now fully staffed. We had a change with the State Parks Land Swamp in the state, uh, of the... I guess, I'm sorry, that was redundant. It was supposed to be Flora's Lake. And they did approve the exchange, the Board did. And, um, the property for the state is across from the high school. And, do you guys wanna talk a little bit about that project? It's all in place now, and, and they've finalized those, right?
We're in the process of approving the, um, the final transaction, but, uh, the Board did agree to swap the Flora's Lake parcels that were in discussion at that time for a different piece of property. That should be finalized pretty quick here. Um, we're working on the legal, uh, Council's working on the legal side of that.
So I've actually received an email exchange of the document from the state. And they, we've explained to them that we require a wet ink, uh, signed document for recording purposes. And so, they're gonna send us, I think, duplicate original wet ink signatures. So if anybody sees those, they may come to the BACH office. So if those come to the BACH office, keep your eyes open. But, um, it was on my list to, it was just happened last week or so. So it was on my list to follow up with the state to say, "Are you sending the hard copies?" But I've got a printed-out email copy, uh, on my desk.
Okay, thank you. Um, there was a discussion about facilities maintenance and the need for successor, successor, sorry. So someone has been hired, and they started training. They're gonna look at, Eric's looking at training them to take over the buildings. They're very unique, and they have a specialized training period for that, so there's a nice overlap in the two positions. There was a discussion about an amnesty program to address the tax assessors' challenges in being able to update, um, property assessments. The program... Oh, and they need to get the program on the unper- unpermitted program structures on the tax roll. The BOC has approved that amnesty program through April 2020. But it allows people to come in willfully and pay for permits, so that we can have the lowest cost to us while we get all of that updated and bring that program up to speed.
Just a note on that one, too. Um, so the amnesty program does not give them amnesty from, um, the Assessor's Office, or any penalties or anything that might be assessed through there. The amnesty program is basically, um, allowing them to come in and apply for the building permits they should've had, and do so without penalty through that program. Um, and then, um, as Charlene said, that will go through until April 1st of this coming year. And after that date, if we do find unpermitted structures that, um, didn't go through the proper channels through planning and building safety, at that time, we can start either, um, issuing citations, or if the Board approves a double permit fee, um, when we look at our fee schedule, at that time, that would be implemented. But until that time, people do have the opportunity to come in and apply for those permits without penalty from those two departments.
Discussion.
Planning and building safety.
Okay, to move on? Okay. The event center funding. The transient lodging tax did pass, and 35% of those revenues have been allocated to fund the event center. Coincidentally, because it passed, the Sheriff will now receive 25% of that funding. The Roads Department. Um, Rich acquired the new roads equipment, and will report at mid-year on the cost savings to the county for that. The Buildings Official with Josephine County partnered with us, which resulted in an initial savings of about $10,000. A Budget Committee member expressed concerns about the cost of materials and centralized, and suggested centralized purchasing to save money and buy bulk. But these are great ideas, and to date, there have been some development with new relationships for vendors. One of which is Amazon. We developed a government account on there, so that we get those rates, and set the departments up with individualized accounts, so that no billings can be crossed over. They just have their card for each department. Also found a savings on ink toners. They average about $85. There's a difference. Some of them are up to $150. And I was able to find, uh, a vendor that will do those for around $25 a toner. And the more expensive ones, we're looking at about $35, but it's a significant savings. We would really be able to see the results of that savings until, of course, this budgeting year is over. There was some discussion on non-departmental revenues last season, for the example, the 3% tax on marijuana. Since the budget was adopted, the Board has directed those general monies to go to the Sheriff's Fund. So that's a new line item there, and that will be saved for him, for his department. There was concern expressed regarding inmate medical costs. This past year, there was approximately $110,000 of the Sheriff's Budget that went to cover inmate medical costs. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but when someone is incarcerated, their health insurance is stopped. They're not allowed to use it within the jails, and then that burden is placed on our jail service. And so that's quite an impact. Some of the bills just for prescriptions can be several thousand dollars. Senator Merkley is working on a proposal for that bill, and that would allow inmates to retain insurance when incarcerated. So we're looking at a way to alleviate those costs for the Sheriff. Finally, there was a discussion about using the road fund to balance the county's budget. The Board has been pursuing several options to increase general revenue funds without accessing the Road Department's funds. Um, any questions before I move on to the next topic?
I would like to revisit, uh, the Sheriff's Department and their vacancies. I do think they have some vacancies right now. I don't think they are fully staffed.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Um, we did hear that the other day, though. And I think those vacancies are in patrol, but I'm not sure. I know Captain McDonald's here. We wanna address those real quick.
We do have a few vacancies in patrol.
I think you have to step up to the-
Yeah. Sorry. Just, just for an update on that, we do have, currently, right now, we have four vacancies in, on the patrol division. Just part of that has been a lack of ability to find qualified personnel. Um, we are, actually, we just did an in-house where we're going to... Probably bring a couple over from Corrections or from other where in the Sheriff's Office that have shown interest in working on the patrol side. Um, so we're, we're currently working in that, but we're recruiting all the time. And, um, we had one person that, you know, we had to let go, and we had another person that decided he liked working in the jail better, which we like that when they realize that themselves. So, um, that's what has created our, our, um, deficiency on the patrol side. The rest of this, the rest of the Sheriff's Office, dispatch, jail, everything else, we're a full staff. It's just on the patrol side. Um, and then, you mentioned inmate medical. Just so you guys are aware, I don't know how close you watch it, but we currently have two people in jail right now that, one of them is costing us a little over $6,000 a month in medications. And the other one is costing us about $3,500 a month in medications. So, right now, currently, we're spending a little over $9,000, pushing $10,000 a month just on, on prescriptions. So, as just a heads up, you know, you guys know, that's one of those deals that, uh...
What do you do?
Some years, we get lucky, some years, we don't. Um, you can't, it's a moving target. You can, you can do your best planning for it, but you never know what's gonna happen. And then the other part on the inmate medical, I think you guys know, we had contracted with Curry Community Health to provide medical services in the jail. Um, they have given us notice some time ago that they're not going to do that and provide that service. So, we are currently trying to find another vendor to provide medical services in the jail. And that, you may see a proposal in the not-too-distant future that will probably cost more than what we were spending before. We'll see. I mean, it's just a heads up. That's where that's heading, so... Yes, Commissioner?
Uh, Captain, what, to be clear for the public, the funding was put in place, even though you haven't filled some of those spaces.
Correct.
We have budgeted for those positions as long, you know, as, as you've, you know-
Yes, yes, the, the funding's all in place. It's just a matter of, um, finding the right people that we, you know, that fit with our team and our, our vision, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. Obviously, the, the, uh, the solution, the problem of, all rural counties are dealing with this on the pharmaceutical issue. It's gotta come from the state legislature. Would it just run this idea by the Board and the Budget Committee? Uh, would it be, uh... A wise approach to have a task force or committee to just have the public look at this, be aware of what's going on, and have that be some kind of a bridge to getting better attention with the legislature? And hopefully, even challenging them in the short session? And we might be able to also effect change for other counties that are dealing with this. This is a gigantic issue.
It is, and I think that Senator Merkley has the right idea. Um, his bill is backed by, by, um, Oregon Health Plan and the other major providers. And if, I know it will be endorsed by the Sheriff's Association. I'm sure the, the Association of Oregon Counties will, will endorse it. I know the Chief of Police Association. The thing about that is what it does is, it affects every county in the state, because every county is required to manage a jail. We all have the same issue with the cost of medical in the jail. I mean, I believe Coos County pays... I'm, I'm thinking upwards of $500,000 for their medical coverage in their jail. And it might even be like $750,000. Now, if, and even like for us, if, if insurance kicked in, well, we could have a provider in the jail that... We might still, we might still have to pay some, but they would be billing insurance companies for most of the services they provided. So it would directly reduce our costs, so... Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Do most of the inmates that come in have pre-existing insurance when they come in? Medical insurance?
A lot of them have Oregon Health Plan.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not many of them have private insurance. Some do. Um, but a lot of them either have Oregon Health Plan or Social Security, or, you know, because they're either disabled-
Medicaid, Medicare.
But as soon as they come through the door, right now, that currently stops. So, if we can keep those, um, active while they're in custody, um, it just, it makes... Makes it a lot better on them. I mean, you read Merkley's position and the reasoning behind his bill on it, um, it does. It allows continuation of care. Right now, they don't get that. So if their insurance was still there, they could continue to see the doctors and get the, the continuation of care that they need, so... Yes?
Um, just a side note on that, too, the, so for our next meeting, it is, a resolution is scheduled before the Board of Commissioners to support Merkley's bill. And Joel Hensley from the Sheriff's Office will be present at that meeting to provide additional information about our situation, and then, um, I think in detail about the expenses that we're currently incurring. So if anybody wants more on that, tune in.
And when we get that resolution, we're going to actually forward that right to Merkley's office, so that he can present that along with other signatures throughout the state.
Perfect, that would be, that would be great, and it'd be, I think, cost savings. If we can get it through, it would be something good for all counties, including Curry, so...
All care has also been very instrumental in watching this subject and, uh, working with Merkley. I know I've had conversations with them to see how, if there's anything they could do to help reduce those costs. So I think we have a pretty good representation and effort coming out of southwest Oregon to address some of these concerns.
Just, I have a question. Is that Curry and the Veterans Healthcare, too, this bill?
Yes.
Yes, it, it cuts out-
All federal.
All federal, everything, all state. It, it, if you have Blue Cross Blue Shield, they don't even have to pay, so...
Okay, that's ridiculous.
Even if, you're not guilty yet, you're just charged.
Yeah.
And they kill your insurance. That's ridiculous.
Yes.
Nationwide.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree 100% that is.
Where's our civil liberties?
Are we, I'm assuming these people that are in custody are serious offenders?
Not all of them. Some of them are, I mean, you, people get sent to jail for all kinds of different reasons. Some of it's, some of it's misdemeanors, some of it's felony. I mean, you can have guys that are in on disorderly conduct that have numerous disorderly conducts, where they're serving a year in the county jail. And, l, most of those guys have, whether it's mental health issues or just, or regular health issues, and we put the bill for those, so... It's expensive, so...
Very helpful.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you.
Do you know when the federal law was put into place to allow the, uh, insurances not to pay?
I've been in this business for 31 years, and it was before-
It's always been in place.
It's always been, the counties have always been responsible for the cost of housing inmates in the jails and prisons, and the state in the prisons, so... Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Anything further?
No, watch your head.
I will.
Thanks, Captain.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna reserve my right to, on some of the, the things you went over for questions later, to keep it kinda moving.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh, part of the new Finance Director's role is to kind of dig through the office, get familiar with everything, get oriented. And, um, I discovered that the county has had numerous, uh, insufficiencies, um, in their audits that have been found. I went back as far as 2015. Some of them consistent, some of them of very serious concern. The state has a plan that supports, uh, public agencies by, when, when an audit is turned in, it's randomly selected. If they find there's material inadequacies or errors in there, then they will put you on what's called a corrective action plan. It's a, it's a supportive tool, because if these issues continue, the penalty can be up to 10% of all state monies can be withheld. Um, that's the first step. Uh, there isn't really anything else beyond that that they can do, but the point is to be accountable for how we manage the taxpayer revenues, right? So I prepared these little slides to give you guys an idea of what I've been finding. And these are a summary for 2016, 17, and 18. Each year, these audits were filed late. They're due by December. They were filed in May. The Secretary, and this, this is my comment about the program that I was just describing to you. The, um... September 2018 edition, if anybody's interested in it, you can email me and I'll send it to you. But it, it details the plan of how to work with the state to get a corrective action taken. I've drafted a response for all the things that I'm getting ready to go over with you. And, um, part of that plan includes meeting internal controls, uh, for all of the accounting principles and state rules. And then submitting that to, uh, the Board of Commissioners. And if they agree with the solutions that you've presented, then they would adopt it. It would go through the minutes, and then that plan would be turned into the state with the support of a resolution and the minutes. Those things have not been done for the entire history of these. So, that's why we're taking care of it now. Their summary of these findings are significant deficiencies in attorney, um, sorry, internal controls over accounts receivable. Findings for material weaknesses in internal controls, and instance of material non-compliance for federal award management. Significant deficiencies in internal controls over segregation of duties in payroll, small permitting, and inventory across the department. These are not just one department, these are a few. Significant deficiencies in property tax assessment. Report of significant deficiencies in grant management and reporting. Results of an internal investigation by us, the Director, and myself. The county's working on, um, the results are that we found the county's working with limited staff, with archaic software, and outdated internal office procedures. So while the county has a, um, has a financial policies in place, they haven't been revised in about 10 years. Actually, it's a little bit more than that. And there are no internal procedures for how those things should be accomplished. So if you have turnover in staff, anybody that's coming in behind someone else, there's nothing there for them to find how to pick up that job and go forward with it. Each environment's different. I worked in multiple government agencies over 15 years. And, um, while they are very similar, because they all have the same foundation of the accounting principles, each agency's structure and internal procedures vary significantly. So we need to have those things put in place. That's on my to-do list for this year. The plan of action that I submitted, um, the administrative and financial- The plan of action that I submitted, the administrative and finance teams are researching solutions to address these challenges and have established interim procedures. A plan of action has been drafted and is under review. When a plan is approved, it will go before the board, and a plan must be adopted by the board before it can be submitted to the state. I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself a little bit here. I'm nervous. But I wanted to let you know that this is important. It's something that hasn't been brought to the board's attention in light of the rules for correcting these kind of circumstances before. They are aware now, and we are working together to make sure to have a plan in place so that not only will this situation be corrected, but we address the root causes of what created the circumstances that this office is dealing with. And my commitment is to update the policies and create internal procedures that will address these. So, from now on, there will be a consistency in these practices within both of my departments. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. I know our audit is due by the end of 2019. Have we made an appointment for that, or where are we on that?
Unfortunately, the communication with the auditor has not been great. I haven't dealt with the situation that I'm dealing with in this current circumstance. The previous Finance Director and the Finance Team started that process in the spring. And we, I've reached out to him several times. I actually had support having one meeting with him to try to resolve some of these things, and I haven't heard from him since. So, I took the initiative to file, by the way, with these late audits in the past years, no one filed for an extension. So, that's not good for the county. And this time, I took the initiative to reach out, let them know that I was pretty sure that the audit was not going to be completed by December, that there was internal training issue here. Some of the reports that I'm doing this time, I have never done before. There's no procedures that explain to me how to do it, so I'm kind of reaching out to partnering counties and to state agencies to exactly figure out how to do that. I have contact lists from the previous Finance Director, and I'm using those to navigate different people across the state to get those completed. But in the meantime, the auditor hasn't been communicating, and I'm not really sure exactly where we are in this process. So, I filed for an extension. The state called me this morning. The one that I went up, the third week of October, I went to a conference for the Oregon Government Finance Officers, and I talked to a lot of other counties and said, here's what I'm experiencing. How do you guys handle this? And they gave me some ideas about what to do. They showed me the way things are done in their offices. It's very different from the current practices here. So, I stopped by the state, and I had a meeting with the Audit Division and explained what I was finding and got their input. They were kind enough to provide a summary of their findings and how chronic the situation is with the county. And I got that in writing with supporting documents, and I submitted that for our Director of Operations to see what the condition is and what I'm doing to resolve that at this time. I filed for the extension so that at least this way, we have permission to be late. And they just called me just a couple of minutes before this meeting, and we made an appointment to talk later this afternoon to see what we can do to address the request with the current status of the finances.
When do you anticipate this audit to be completed?
I've had zero communication with our auditor, so I'm going to go with the past pattern. He's been with us two years before, and each year, his audit has been submitted in May, and he did not submit all the legally required documents. We are currently on the county, the state's deficiency list.
Has this contacted through a private auditor?
This is an RFP that we contracted with, and I have approval right now, and I have a draft RFP to go out for bid in the spring. We will be getting a new auditor.
Because I noticed on some of these, like the significant deficiency in property tax assessment, the software, limited staff, those are decisions we dealt with in the last meeting, and we've solved, we've taken care of some of that.
We, I did find solutions from the previous Finance Director. However, those solutions did not bring us in compliance, and that plan was not submitted in the way that it was legally required to be submitted, so the solutions weren't adequate. They were great ideas, but.
I, I'm sorry, I don't want to disagree with you, but, you know, we approved new software through the Assessor's Office. We approved a new hire.
The Assessor's Office has a plan, and the Board of Commissioners has been working with them. These are just what was stated in our last audit. So, yeah, there's a lot of activity to correct some of these things, but some of the solutions that were presented were not approved by the state. They don't approve them, but they didn't meet the minimum requirements. The Tax Assessor's Office has been very proactive in addressing the concerns there and working with the board to fix those things. We just haven't had an audit since they've put those things in place.
Well, I think it's pretty important that we have an audit prior to the budget meetings, I would think, to address these at that time. Am I off-base here?
I would concur with that, and we're hopeful that this, you know, like Charlene just said, you know, we're going to put out another IMP for a new audit firm to do this, and hopefully, that'll happen sooner than later because it is important. We want to start the budget process much earlier in the year so that we can start to develop a direction for the county. Hopefully, we'll have our strategic plan in by then as well, so wage studies will be done. All of that will be done. So, hopefully, next year, we can really get to work and nail down a good budget, and to find a firm, hopefully, will be sooner than later.
I just want to add too that when it comes to an auditor, the recommendation is that you periodically change the auditor, whether they're doing good or bad. You know, it's just good to have that fresh set of eyes every couple of years during your audit. So, I think the RFP process of looking for a new auditor is something we should just routinely get used to doing so we don't get comfortable with any one auditor. But I know there have been some conversations a little bit earlier this fall with the auditor, so we'll just have to re-engage with them and make sure we're getting the information we need from them.
Yeah, I'm not trying to pick at you, but I'm.
There has been great advancement for Tax Assessor's Office.
I thought we made some great progress.
Yeah. We haven't been audited since they've initiated those changes.
Well, I would, for one, would like to see an audit completed before the next budget process so we can not face this again with shortballs because I thought we made some good steps this year.
And there were some grant management controls put in place from the prior Finance Director, working with actually counsel. And those things have made improvements in areas. So, it's not that any of these areas have not been addressed. There have been improvements in a couple of the areas. It's that the corrective plan that was sent to the state was non-compliant and that we're still trying to fix some of those things. The staffing issue and the archaic software is a huge concern in managing county finances. Right now, none of the departments have access to their budgets. They're dependent upon PDF reports that are generated by the AP clerk, and those are placed in a shared drive. So, they are working, I actually have some examples. If you look in your packet, I gave you the first quarter's report for this year. And to compare that, please note, that's an Excel printout. Look a little deeper right behind it. I have no way to look at trends in the current software. It doesn't allow us to look at revenue trends or trends for accounts payable. The previous Finance Director did all of that in Excel. So, the first one is after I took it out of the software, exported the report, and manipulated it to look that visually pleasing. The second one is what our software currently generates without me doing anything to it. And it really looks to me like something that fell out of the 90s. We should be able to analyze expenditures. We should be able to conduct payroll analysis. Our department should be able to work their five-year plans in the software. We should be able to be transparent with the public, and I should be able to do analysis in all these different areas for my office. This software does not do that. Right now, it has to be generated and worked in Excel. I believe that it's a disservice to taxpayers to pay someone at my salary to have to manipulate data in Excel manually. This is 2019. These days, those reports are generated in one or two moments, and this is costing us a lot of time. And I believe is the priority next to concerns for workload on these audit issues. So, our tax dollars are paying for two individuals to be in my office, just for example. Those individuals are overworked. They're trained. They've been with this agency for a very long time. The payroll coordinator 22 years, my AP clerk 11 years in January. And yet, with the current practices and software limitations, they're overworked. They're wanting to look at hiring someone else. I say that that is an unproductive, inefficient choice, that we should be looking at a more productive, efficient software. Every department head should have access to their budget. They should be able to look at where their expenditures are in a moment, not spend their time playing with their budgets and struggling with it. They have other things to be doing. They should be able to address that in just a few minutes.
Sure. So, software is something that the Board of Commissioners will be looking, is looking at with Charlene. Charlene, can you keep going with other parts of the auditor or perhaps the next slide?
This is the current status of our general fund. This is the print from your report, and I wanted to make sure that you guys were able to see the balance of the general fund, the liabilities and fund balance. And then, this is the status of those accounts. All departments are printed, and they're in your packet. I have a concern because of those negative numbers that you're seeing on there. General Fund is the only one that I put in the PowerPoint for you. So, I pulled that report, the second report that you have there, to look at where were we last year at the same time in the quarter and to be able to see if that was something normal within this environment. In other environments, I would have been able to move those funds around to make sure that everything was covered. Here, things are done a little bit differently. So, this is where we are with that. And with the changes since adoption, we also have to incorporate those into the current status of the budget. It is November, so we're going to be getting our property tax revenue and some of our grant monies in the next two months. So, we should be able to see all of this balanced in January, and in January, we'll be doing our mid-year review. During that period of the next two months, we'll be doing supplemental budgets and trying to adjust everything for these funding appropriations wherever it's needed. Some of the things that we're getting ready to cover, we'll tell you what those changes are. So, some of the changes, unpaid membership dues. There was some bills where there was a supplemental budget done last year. The Board approved paying membership for some of, like, Association of Oregon Counties and a few things like that. It was $21,700. The bill did not get paid. So, the new budget was adopted over that without those expenditures being covered, and now, we're trying to figure out how to balance that. Currently, that's been divided over two years, but what that means is in January, that bill is due again. And so, we're still going to have that money that we're going to have to come up with. Right now, the suggestion is to wait till July. I believe that's a poor choice because that leaves us six months late paying one bill, and it also leaves us struggling. We're going to always be playing catch-up unless we get that covered now, so that's one thing we have to look at. There is just under $10,000 between the Association of Counties for that one, and there's a couple of others on there. Our Maintenance Department Head had a full maintenance budget for the year planned to $40,000. The HVAC went out, so his budget has been absorbed by that one activity, and it now exceeds his allocated monies by $1,062. And this morning, I got an email that there was another cost for Oregon Alarms for a security system to get into place, and that's going to be another $12,000. I'm not sure if you had that planned ahead, Eric? No. So, that's going to be an.
That should have been $1,200.
That wasn't $1,000. It's $1,800. It's not $12,000.
Did I say $12,000? I'm sorry. I thought I meant $1,200. Sorry, my mistake. And so, that'll be about $3,000 that we're going to need to move around for his budget. We have great news to get us all on the same page. We are working on, the Board is working on a strategic business plan. Director was able to get $6,000 for that in place. That's going to help with a lot of these things because we're all going to be focusing on one shared vision, and it's going to help department heads know exactly where they're expected to allocate monies and get us going in a place that will meet everyone's expectations. Another thing that I found when I got here was the equitable pay law. There's a new law in Oregon. It's not a new law. It was just updated that requires equal pay for equal positions. So, if someone's a senior account clerk in one office, then the senior account clerk in the other office needs to have equitable pay. The only thing that can vary is, for example, seniority or merit increases, things like that. So, right now, we're in the process of evaluating those pay disparities, or to see if there is disparities. The rule says that whatever is the highest paid position for each position, that sets the bar. No one's pay can be lowered, so you now have your standard. So, that is going to be looked at within a wage study for the state and our region. And then, those two numbers will project what we're going to have to do with our payroll projections next year. Oh, sorry, that's another topic. I wanted to pause on the solutions. So, the other thing that's in place is in your packet, it's PERS. PERS is going through significant legislative changes. The rates are going up to 27.7. Depends on what group that you're in, how the impact will hit us. I'll be working with the payroll coordinator to take the results of the pay equity study, the wage study, and then the impact of the purge legislative changes to evaluate where we are with the county. And we're going to have to come up with some strategies when we see what that looks like during the budget season. I'm trying to make sure those things are in place before we start budgeting. And then, this is just another minor thing for housekeeping. I wanted to give you guys a chance to talk. If anybody has any discussions or any questions?
Charlene, is it for sure that we have to pay that PERS? I mean, it's in place, right, or is it coming?
No, it's done, and the impact has been scheduled. Please look in your packets at the handouts towards the back. The first page looks like this. This is payroll since the budget was adopted, all payroll changes and what those numbers look like. And then, I just, the total handouts for the trainings that I went to at the conference were 70-something pages long. So, this is just the short version I took. These are what the schedule of increases were. And this is for the 1921, 20-year, 20, 21-year, sorry. I cited that 27.27%, increase. This is behind it, an impact, for example, that was in the package we were given. This is how it impacted Deschutes County. They're not a comparable county for Curry, but this is what was in the presentation that we sat through, and I wanted to give you guys an idea of what that looks like in another environment. We'll be working with our payroll, our PERS representatives to find out exactly what that's all about. There were a couple of packages that were offered to help mitigate those costs, but every one of them required cash pay-in from the counties.
While we're talking about PERS, I know there's different levels. And this 26.06%, does that take into account all of the various levels of?
It's what they average the rate increase, so my understanding is that that will be applied across to each package. Each one's a little bit different. There's not a lot of Tier One people. They're mostly people that were around in the 1990s, or they're in the retirement phase right now. So, it does change with each different tier that they're in.
So, dare I say it, we're hoping to have a mortality rate on the Tier One folks? Just.
You know.
Don't say that. Anyway.
So, these are some of the packages that were offered. I wanted you guys, you'll hear about those in the public and on TV. I wanted you to realize I was aware of them. The impact to the county would have been significant, and the requirement was to cash upfront buy-in. So, I didn't know that we, I don't feel that we have the funding to be able to do what they were asking us to do. And they also gave us a tiny window. So, needless to say, those presentations, there was a lot of questions and answers and begrudged people. One of the things that was noted was a few counties had said, well, maybe, you know, we'll just quit buying into PERS. We can find another retirement plan. But PERS has a rule that once you buy in, there's no backing out.
I'm going to kind of contest that a bit. I know some counties, their new employees, they have set up another type of retirement system.
So, maybe there would be a way to transition away from them, but once you're in, yeah. Once you're in, you're in. You can't just quit later.
Is that once the county is in or the employee is in?
The employee. And the counties were the ones asking the question, and I just listened to the discussion. I had researched PERS at another area before, and the buy-in cost was too high for the environments I was working in at that time. So, this is my first experience with PERS, Oregon PERS.
Yeah, they're in deep trouble.
Yeah. So, once you're in, you're in. So, now, we have to figure out how to balance the budget. It's going to have, it's going to have an impact on our payroll for the 2021 cycle.
Great.
Okay?
Clam.
Oh.
Clambow County has that plan. They're trying to get it off the ground, just the new employees coming in. Or they're addressing it, yeah, pretty seriously.
So, actually, the Oregon Association of Counties is having a conference in the third week of this month. I'm in what's a new HR track for the state, and we're all going to a roundtable to address how the PERS changed. how the PERS changes are impacting us, the pay equity changes, the evaluations and the analysis of that, and to look at healthcare costs and union negotiations, all of these elements that are impacting everything at a table together with all the different counties so that we can try to get on the same page and work together to find some solutions.
At that meeting, could you maybe suggest that, or counties, um, come together to come up with some sort of HSAA, Health Savings Account thing for all of the counties?
Yeah, we have looked at that, and, um, it depends on your carrier. We circulated that question earlier this year to our carrier, and there wasn't anything that was financially prudent that they were able to offer.
Well, that was because we're such a small county, so that's why I'm suggesting that maybe the counties band together to come up with some solution for this.
Yeah, that is one idea, and I can definitely bring it up at the conference.
Yeah, because healthcare is killing us, PERS is killing us.
All of these things, they are, and in fact, it was mentioned that a couple of, um, of, um, entities have had to leave, uh, the state of Oregon for those kind of effects on their businesses. Of course, they weren't public agencies, but these are all things that everyone's working together to address. Right now, we don't have any answers, so we're just going to go to a roundtable and see what ideas we can come up with.
Because I know the insurance plan we're currently with demands that every single person be on this healthcare, and even though spouses are working here, both spouses have to pay, even though old people like myself are on Medicare, I ha, I have to have it. And so, costs could be cut significantly.
That impacts our workforce as well, because if we have an employee that isn't a hundred percent, their share of that fifteen thousand dollars a year is put on the employee. So say, for example, you have a fifty percent, twelve fifty an hour person working for you, they now are responsible for seven thousand five hundred dollars of a non-option health insurance. So therefore, we don't have people staying with us, within our budget-
They can't afford it.
-because they don't want to pay to work for us, right? They, it's, it's a negative for them. I had a work program that I installed, or started when we first got here, and after evaluating all of the things, the other partnering agencies have not been able to place one person with us. So, that was a rule I was unaware of at that time. It's my fault, but those, all things, all, they all impact us, so. Anything else?
I just sent everybody the Clamath County plan, just in case. It's fairly extensive.
Okay. Yeah, nice. Um, the other thing was, the budget law resolutions have been in, uh, unusual format, so I wanted you to be looking for the, um, coming cycle. Uh, we'll be changing that. So I gave you the, um, page fifty-six of the Budget Law Manual. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but basically, in your resolution, you have to list the budget per program or department, whatever your preferred term is. And, um, in the past, it's been listed by the fund. So we'll be seeing the budget resolution next year look a little differently. It will resemble, I'm sorry this is so tiny, but this is one I got from Jefferson County, it will resemble something like this. The, it's going to cost more to place the add, but it is budget law that it is done this way, and it has been since two thousand and twelve. Okay, um, do we want to take anything before I go on to anticipated changes? No? Okay. So, as we just discussed, the cost changes of PERS regulations for SB ten forty-nine, the potential impact of the pay equity analysis on, is an unknown variable, and it falls under these statutes, and it became effective in January of this year. We had to have the analysis done and evaluate that through payroll that started on July. Employers, uh, may not renew the compensation of any employee in order to comply with the law. Everyone else has to be brought up to the standard of the highest paid employee in that like position. Amounts owed to an employee because of a failure to, uh, a failure of an employer to comply with the requirements of the pay equity law are considered unpaid wedge, unpaid wages, wages, sorry. So the reason I put this in there is I wanted that you understand that if there's anything determined where we've shortened someone's salary from being equal to someone else, we're going to have to come up with the funds to pay that person from the time of the implementation of the law. So these things are going to have a significant impact on our budgeting cycle in the coming year. And this, after that positive note, are the time for question and answers.
Do we have the figures on, uh, the code enforcement? What's come in for fines, and what do we anticipate if we add another code enforcement officer?
Yeah, um, I don't have any projections. We can get that from the department head in January, they'll be doing their presentations. But I do have, in the reports that I gave you, the status of his budget at this time, the person that he hired is new right now. So, um, we're not sure exactly what that will be.
I can comment on that. So, code enforcement falls under the Community Development Department, which, um, I happen to be the director of that department, so I don't have the exact name, numbers for you, uh, number Thody, but I can tell you this. Being the first year of the program, our code enforcement person has taken, I, what I would call a softer approach than just going out and issuing citations. We really want to give people a chance to comply with the code, because compliance is really what we're trying to get, not, you know, financial resources. So he's actually done a great job working with people, giving them, you know, first chance, second chance, third chance. He and I actually had a conversation last week about, um, the expense of running the program, and when you do try that soft approach, how much it costs. Because, you know, you could go out there right away and issue a citation. You'd bring more money into the program. It's really not the best approach, though, when you're dealing with land use and code compliance issues. So with this new code enforcement person coming on board, um, the board is at their next meeting, the board will actually decide whether or not they're going to hire that person. But moving forward, um, and having more staff available to help, we've discussed, maybe not doing the three of pro, three-strikes-you're-out approach, but maybe after you give them the warning, if they don't comply, maybe that's when we proceed with issuing the citation. Um, and that will help increase some of those revenues as well. I did reach out to the cities to see if maybe they would want to, um, have some, pay for some of those code enforcement services as well. I'm waiting to hear back from all of the cities on that. We did have Port Orford actually ask if they could help, or if they could use one of our code enforcement people for their services, so that can help offset some of our costs with that program as well, some of those services. But moving forward, you know, we've just, like I said, being the first year in the program, we took a softer approach, we didn't hard-line it on the citations, but moving forward, we're going to have to.
Well, I can appreciate that. I mean, coming from a career in law enforcement and regulations, but I, you know, we're talking about PERS, increased costs, we're talking about adding another person, and I know that's kind of out of the realm of what, but I would express my concern that we need to be, um, conscious of hiring and, and adding staff, because I think you said your office was overworked and underpaid, but also, that was a comment what I heard all last year from people in this county, employees. So I, I think, in my opinion, we have to be careful on just going out, creating new position, because you have increased, um, PERS cost, and in a storybook world, it's okay if you take a soft approach, but in a realistic world, I just don't see how that you could justify unless you're going to become aggressive, and-
That's a good point, yes, I got it.
That is something that this board has addressed, and I want to make sure that the Budget Committee understands. Um, our current code enforcement officer is inundated with work, an extremely hard-working man, and he can't get to, I don't think he can get to half the calls he gets to. He's got a book of just lists.
Over five hundred.
We have discussed this, uh, on, on several occasions, and that was why, why the board found the need to bring in the second one. And, you know, between the soft approach of the first year and now the tax amnesty program, those kind of things, um, after the expiration of that in March, I think the board would be much, um, more looking to be a little sterner, um, and, and start to enforce some of the violations more than, um, the soft-glove approach.
And, and I've actually seen him in the field doing his job, and he does a great job. He is really, his interaction with people is really, i- it's good.
He's a perfect match because he's ex-law enforcement.
Yes.
So he understands how you got to deal with the public, and it's great. He's been great.
Don't misinterpret me.
No, I don't.
I have no doubt about that, and I was impressed with him. I just think that the county has to be careful about-
Yeah.
-we're in a, a budget constraint, and we're, we're raising salaries, we're hiring new people, and we've addressed a lot of the issues, I thought, in the last one. And I'm not sure totally what your background, are you CPA or?
I wanted to share that with you, too. So I know this was a really hard-line presentation today, and I wanted to put that in context for you. It doesn't feel good to stand up here and tell you all these things.
I'm sure.
However, this commission is extremely proactive. The reason that I, um, elected to join this team was I was approached and asked, my master's degree is in public administration. They wanted someone with a bigger picture view, to be able to look at what's going on with the county, and how those choices and efficiencies and current operations impact the budget, instead of just someone that focuses strictly on the numbers. So what I've done is look at all of the efficiencies, compared that with what other areas are doing, with what's currently going on in this office, and then looked at how well is that meeting the needs of taxpayers? That's what I was charged with, reducing expenditures, creating a more efficient way of doing things. By the way, let me correct that. Drafting solutions and opportunities for more efficient ways of doing business, and presenting that to this team so that they're able to make, uh, informed decision, uh, how, how to aggressively address the issues that the county is facing now. They weren't really clear exactly on everything that was going on, but they were very aware that there were things that were brought to their attention that they wanted to address. So this hard-line approach is my first. It's my quarter, first quarter here. Anytime you bring a new person into an environment, they are always going to see everything that someone else has never seen, right? Everyone here has been just working their buns off, keeping everything going, doing business as usual. And I came in with a fresh perspective. It's like handing a, a story that you wrote to someone else to edit. They're always going to find the mistakes that you were used to seeing and read back to yourself the way you wanted it to be. And so that's what this relationship presents for me, is an opportunity to create a more efficient system and look at a modernized way of providing services to the community.
Okay. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Chair, good discussion, very good discussion, and this is something that we have wrestled with. I want to first just mention, uh, under Director Schmelzer's, uh, leadership with the whole Community Development Department. There are, on one side of it, people want us to clean up the county, because if it gets too far out of, uh, control, and you're seeing that in other counties, other cities, big cities, small, everywhere. On the other side, there's, there's some hard times out there for people. So we're looking at, uh, you know, since the recession of two thousand eight, the last ten years has been really difficult, and these are not necessarily non-compliant or not alive-biting citizens, so, um, and it's part of our economic development, too, and cleaning up the county. And it's, it's a big responsibility, and it's, again, it's something that we wrestle with, and yet, uh, I'd really like your approach, uh, that you just articulated there, Director Schmelzer, that that was the route we needed to go and begin with that, and the amnesty program is part of that. So I think we're on the right track, and I think that, uh, that's what the citizens need us to do, and we're not taking a hard line. We may have to fairly soon. That's all I have.
It is actually in, in keeping pace with the rest of the state. A lot of other communities are addressing these things in a new way. For example, um, a public administrator in the finance office that oversees and accounting staff for looking at ways of reducing those expenditures and addressing what's coming in the future so that we're not caught off-guard from it. The amnesty program is a beautiful way of increasing our revenues and bringing our funding up to what we need to be able to do business to serve our population.
How are we doing on the amnesty program? Where are you?
So I can talk about that. I don't have the numbers, um, in front of me right here, but, uh, it was a little crazy at first, the phones ring off the hook. We actually had to dedicate a separate phone line for it, um, because a lot of people were coming in and checking and saying, "I have this property, have all the permits been issued on it?" So it went, it's been going very well. Of course, in the beginning, it, we had a huge influx of people self-reporting, so that has been good. Um, I did ask staff to start tracking who was coming, not who, but which, uh, the numbers, you know, how many permits were a result of that amnesty program. I do just want to make a comment, though, on the staff concern that you had, Mr. Thody, and, um, you have in front of you, Charlene had presented the list of new employees since the budget was adopted, and I just wanted to go through that list real quick with you, answer some of those concerns about new employees.
I, you don't need to go through that. I'm just saying that we need to, I just think we need cognizance of, of creating kingdoms. I came from a kingdom where you, the answer was to throw more manpower at it. In some cases, I agree with it, and, and other instances, what you're talking about, become more efficient. So if we're looking at what it's going to cost for a new employee for a department versus, uh, new software or something that, as you said, might make it more efficient, so that's all I'm saying. I don't want to throw any stones at this, I just think we have to look at that.
And I want to ensure the Budget Committee, I mean, this board and our staff, um, these are all well-thought things, and I'm not going to say they're all going to work out perfectly. You know, we're going to, we're going to make mistakes. The, the, the good news is, we're on, you know, I, I believe we're on top of this, and it's not going to go too far. If we, if we find we've made a mistake, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and say, "Let's fix this," you know? So, we are going to watch this very closely, and if it starts to be a burden rather than a plus for the county, we'll pull the plug, you know?
I'm, I'm very confident in that, in the commissioners. I wouldn't be sitting here on a voluntary basis, spending a thousand dollars to fly here for a meeting when I'm not, weren't going to be in the area, so. And I, and I appreciate it. These are just concerns I have, so.
I think they're great concerns, and I want to let you know, um, I, I am new to this county. This, I just started at July twenty-ninth, and I feel really privileged knowing what goes on inside the offices and the focus of this commission and our director. They're very proactive. They're working hard to address exactly what you're talking about. What are the more efficient ways of using taxpayer dollars? Are we getting our bang out of our buck? Where are we putting that money, and where do we need it? Getting stakeholder input, taxpayers are included in those processes. I'm sure you've heard in the community some of the programs that they're on top of. And just hearing the interview that they conducted with me when I was hired, that's what was the deciding factor for me, knowing that this is not business as usual. They're taking a, a very strong approach at cleaning this up and seeing what we can do better and letting things stay that are working well.
I agree with that a hundred percent, but I'm just, I have to ask questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Things are concerning-
No complaints at all.
And I'm, you know, I'm kind of interested in where we're at, the transit tax.
But you're a Marine, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not a Marine. I came from a good, I came from the Army, where we carried Marines up the hill. Just kidding.
I can answer that question as well.
Okay.
Um, where we're at on the transit tax. So the transit lodging-
Can we go back to, I, I would like to hear your report on the employees there, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in touch up to-
That's okay.
Okay, so I'll answer that question, then I'll go back to your question.
Thank you.
So, um, so the sheet in front of you has the code enforcement, um, and as Charlene had indicated, we are going to be hiring a new code enforcement person. Some of that will be paid with citations, of course. We are also looking at different ordinances right now that will, um, bring more money to our sheriff's department, and that will also include covering those code enforcement expenses. Uh, so we're working on that, um, so that will not, what you see as budgeted, a lot of that will or should be offset with some of those ordinances that are coming down the line. For the building department, um, you'll see that we had an administrative assistant. She was, uh, working thirty-seven and a half hours. She was raised to forty hours. Uh, that is due to the workload down there, but also because, uh, we want the offices open to be, to be open on Fridays, and that person will be, um, has stepped forward and said she would be willing to take on those Friday hours. So there is a slight increase there. We have a building inspector, trainee that we added. He's an irregular employee, he's been paid seventeen dollars an hour. That is a position, um, where currently, we contract for some of those services, and we have other people being paid in a regular salary at, for example, thirty-five dollars an hour. By bringing that person on-house as a trainee, we can, um, get them trained to do those services in-house at a cheaper rate than what we're contracting. at a cheaper rate than what we're contracting or paying other people to do. The other thing with that position is we have an agreement with Josephine County where they are actually paying for our employees to get educated through their internship program. So that's not costing us those, the full expense of educating them or getting them the licenses that they need. But in the long run, it's actually an investment because we'll be able to pay them, we'll be able to save over 15 bucks an hour on some of these employees, on that employee, in the long run. The surveyor, we did take the, we outsourced our surveying, which in the long run saves us money on the surveyor expense. We took the money, the savings from that and we added it to the admin person that was in that surveyor's office and added her to the community development department to help pick up some of the needs that they had in that department. So the money we save on the surveyor position is added to the admin position to, rather than hiring another person for community development. We're seeing the permit log greatly, has greatly increased in the building safety department. So with that, you do have to add staff. And one way of doing it was taking somebody from the surveyor's office, making her full-time, adding to her wages, putting her in community development, taking the money you save on the surveyor's position to offset her salary. Economic development assistant, so the economic development assistant is a new position. And that was added because when the transient lodging tax program was proposed, the committee that worked on that, I believe, was under the understanding that the state would collect the transient lodging tax. The state does not collect transient lodging taxes. So once that program was voted in in May, we actually had to hire somebody to collect that tax because, like I said, the state won't, so we had to collect that ourselves. So a portion of the transient lodging tax dollars goes for that salary. The county also implemented a building license program so they could understand what businesses we have, work with, you know, which ones are dealing with chemicals. Maybe our fire departments should be aware of, things of that nature. And a portion of that, those building license fees actually go to pay for that program as well. The goal is that that program is completely self-funded, so that would not be a strain on the general fund. As far as the occupancy, the assistant facilities maintenance director position, that was budgeted. And that is basically an interim position, so to speak, that when the current facilities maintenance director retires, that this person would then step up and take that position. So it's really looking at more of a succession planning type person position. That will not be a long-term position, so I mean, that person will eventually move up and that position that was just approved will not be backfilled. So in the long run, saving money. The facilities, this person, when they become the facilities maintenance director, will not be at the same rate as the current facilities maintenance director. So again, it was more of a succession planning move and long-term strategy to save money in the long run.
And that's time-sensitive as well.
Yeah. With the other two you have before you, the Boca expansion and the juvenile position, those are grant-funded positions. So when you look at all the staff that's really been added, the one that's really gonna be in addition to the budget, so to speak, not back to the general fund dollar or that would rely on the general fund, would be that code enforcement position. But long-term, that will be offset with some of the programs and funding sources that we're looking at right now to pay for that position as well as add money to the sheriff.
Did you mention you're wanting to hire one more person?
No, let me address that as well. So when Charlene first started, we sat down with her staff, Charlene and the chair, and we looked at what was needed in the finance department. And it was noted that it was advisable, what we saw as a need was to bring in an entry-level AP clerk-type position to help out in that department. And then that will also help with succession planning so that when staff in that department is ready to move on, we at least feel comfortable and have somebody trained and ready to step in and take over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to then address the second question, which was where are we doing on the, how are we doing on the transient lodging tax? So the transient lodging tax, as I said, did pass in May and effective October 1st, the lodging establishments had to start collecting that tax. The first quarter will end December 31st and then those revenues are due in January. So we won't know exactly what we can expect until January of 2020. And again, it's gonna take us a full year before we really know what to get with that program. The quarter that we're collecting for right now is actually a slower time. So it'll, it's, if we use that as a base and say, this is the minimum we're gonna get, it can help us project the revenues at a bare minimum. But keep in mind, you know, the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year will actually have higher revenues for that transient lodging tax program. But we have just started, we haven't even seen one quarter collected yet. And that was designed by ordinance. When it was passed, it said that the first quarter that we would collect would be October 1st to December 31st.
All right, so I wanted to let you know, the next thing we have on here is the next steps. Are you guys interested in doing any in-between budget workshops? Or would you be okay with our mid-year review in January?
If we could tie it into in a same time period, I mean, I think workshops are good for that. And I don't have a problem with it. But if we can keep it in a relatively time, like towards the end of January or, you know, because I do travel quite a bit and so I do need to make sure my schedule's available. But I'm not against a budget workshop.
The best outcomes come from teams of people that are striving towards a shared vision. They're working on a business plan for us right now. The county's facing a lot of changes. And I want to offer you to be as engaged with the process with the community as I can and with the budget committee. So I've put in your packet, there's a little set thing of calendars here for you. You don't have to give me an answer today. JJ, do you happen to know the date in January that we're scheduled? I can't, is it the 23rd or the 22nd? Third week of January is...
February 15th?
The week after.
The third week of January?
It was the third, it was later, it was one week.
One week later.
It would be the 22nd.
22nd, okay. So that's what we're looking at, thank you, for the top of the schedule. And at that time, we would have all the revisions done, the mid-year review in place. I would have six months with you guys in place, or five months, I guess, but then, but... And the department heads will give you feedback and all of that. We need to set the budgeting schedule before then. So in the back behind that page is what happened in 1920 for your budget meetings. And then right behind that is the copy of the page from the local budget law manual. This sets the tone for what we need to do together to accomplish budget law objectives. So by February 28th, we need to have prepared budgets. Those projects that I'm working on for human resources, I want completed by January 31st. According to the schedule, we need to have our prepared budget proposed by February 28th. So keeping those two deadlines in mind, I would say we would have our meeting on January 22nd for the mid-year review that will go over where we are in making the changes and bringing everything current for today. And then January 23rd, I'm sorry, January 31st is my latest date for the pay equity project to be completed. And I have the payroll coordinator and I will be having a meeting to look at those PERS numbers and will combine those two pieces of information in January to be able to know how to set up information for the department heads to know how to handle their payroll when they're making their budgets for the year. But we have to have that prepared budget in the table by February 28th. So I'm offering a meeting between the end of January and the first part of February so that by February 28th, we can be prepared. Is anyone interested in workshops during that window?
Yes.
Yes.
You said the end of January?
Well, I wanna, if I get it done early, I can contact you guys, but I need...
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, January 31st is the pay equity completion date.
That's fine.
And then we have to have stuff in place for proposed budgets by the 28th of February. So I'm asking those first, those weeks in between, what would you like to do?
Those are good for me, any of those.
Yeah.
Why don't you send us out a calendar of four or five different days and we can all button in on what day we're all available and we can do it that way?
Okay, so I have given each of you a business card. Anyone that would like to participate in that process, please email me so I can put you in the loop, okay? And that way I'll have your email that you want me to do and then I'll get that part of the schedule up and running for us.
Does anybody know of any conflicts that they have right now during that time? I don't have any.
I don't have any.
I think everybody's pretty open, so...
Are those Wednesdays that you're talking about?
Anything you guys wanna do, we're way ahead of the game right now, so I will make it work. I have an audit for the Rhodes STF fund during that window and that's the only thing that's set right now, than regular work in the office.
Is there a day of the week that works better for the commissioners?
Well, Wednesday's for workshops is what we pretty well have.
Is that best to stay with that, do you think?
I think so, 'cause I know, Wednesdays are sacred to me. I make sure I have a...
How about if we just try to pull the first three workshops, the first three weeks? Do you want three of February, sorry, to be specific? The 31st, the pay equity ends. Do you wanna work at the first Wednesdays of February and just go with that? That's pretty easy.
It's fine with me.
So the first three Wednesdays is what we're talking about?
Yes, 'cause the 28th is the deadline to have a proposed budget.
This would exclude the 22nd?
No, January 22nd is our mid-year review. We need that meeting to help us know where we are in the current budget.
So the first three Wednesdays of February, we'll have a workshop?
Okay, so there you go. Now we don't have to worry.
Is that good with everybody?
So are we gonna need three workshops? Just curious.
I don't know, but we can schedule three and then if we get it done and we feel like we're good, we don't have to keep up with the other three or with the rest of them. We can just play it by ear. In the past, that's what we've done. So when I was on budget committees, we did six meetings that were scheduled, you know, during the cycle of the season from May. And then if we got it done early, we got it done early. We could get it adopted and we didn't have to keep the rest of them. But a worst-case scenario would be every opportunity and I would suggest scheduling three, just in case. We may need, I'm sorry.
So we're looking at February 5th, February 12th, February 19th. Those would be the first three.
At 2, correct?
At 2, yeah, yes. What's that?
February 3rd, the first three, first three Wednesdays would be 3, 10, 17.
Okay.
So is this in lieu of our week-long budget committee meetings where we're...
No, this is to prepare with all of the changes before.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we don't need them all, we don't have to use them all. But if we plan for it, then at least we'll have them. So January 22nd for the mid-year review. We'll hear from all the departments then. February 3rd, 10th, and 17th, ten it to at least.
No, no, that's 5th.
5th, 12th, and 19th.
5th, 12th, and 19th.
I thought JJ just corrected it.
It would be 1, 2, 3, 4, I think it's the 4th. I don't have, I can't take a large book of calendars here.
The first, second, and third Wednesday at 2.
It's the 5th.
That simplifies it.
First Wednesday is the 5th of February, that's okay.
Okay, so it is the 5th, 12th, and 19th?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I thought we had that corrected. Okay, so we'll schedule for those three dates at 2 o'clock each day. If we get done early, we don't have to keep all of them. And then the proposed budget has to be submitted by February 28th. Does anyone have the day of the week for that calendar?
Looks like a Friday.
Okay, so if we go for the Wednesday, the 26th, February 26th, do you guys wanna use that date in keeping in step with our Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay, so proposed budget by Wednesday, February 27th. Three workshops and then the proposed budget on February 27th. Now, that's when the new budgeting cycle's gonna start, right? That's when we're gonna start going through the regular, and it's on here for you, your last page. This is what our objectives are by the state's requirements. Just so that we're all on the same page and we see why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, JJ, will we be able to get a, like an email with just confirming all that stuff out there? Okay, yeah, 'cause I'll, we'll track that for sure.
The other, the other thing I would like to let you know is I wanna hear from you. What did you like, not like, what would you like to hear? What did you wanna get that you didn't get today, whatever? I want a critique. And it's okay to, you know, constructive criticism, truth with grace is how we grow. I really wanna hear your opinions and what you're looking for, what you wanna see done differently. So I gave you my business cards, please feel free to email me. And if you wanna meet, I'm more than happy to meet with you one-on-one, okay? If there isn't anything else, I'm gonna move on to this last topic and ask if that is appropriate for now. It's just a snapshot.
I guess just a overview, you know, earlier we were talking about software and the need to look at software and perhaps how that can bring efficiencies. So Charlene has just something she'd wanna share on that.
This is just an example, compared to what you're seeing from your reports today. These are, there's 18 actually in the state of Oregon that currently use this software. It's called OpenGov, if you wanna research it. This is just one idea. But the city of Ashland... If I can get my hand over here. This is an example of their CAFR, their financial report, generated from this software. If you're interested, email me. I can send you some hyperlinks, but this is just one example of what we can compare it to. There's also, sorry, I can't see from the lights.
And I wanna say while she's working on that, I sat through demonstrations of the software, which we've recorded. If anyone, commissioners or any of you would like to see it in action. I don't, I'm not an accountant, but I will say from the software I've ever seen in my life, wow. And I believe the efficiency of the software would far exceed its cost annually.
It will make things more efficient. It will allow us to do analysis on cost, payable projections.
But you gotta make it the actual slide, from current slide, go up top. Yep.
Thank you. We can do analysis and see, where is the most of my money going in this department? Payroll, department heads have five-year plans. These five-year... I'm sorry. There we go, five-year plans. Right now, if you look at our budget, the way it's printed, we have this big ol' long general ledger number. That number's behind this listing, so city council and all their breakdown expenditures are there. You just don't have to see the numbers. There is a Parks Operation Fund, that easy, boom, the report's ready. And it's unlimited users. Every department head and anyone that they designate will have whatever access that the department head decides that is appropriate or the commission. For example, you wouldn't be able to put money in your own fund if it crosses over segregated duties.
And you could have like our assessor's office, they custom make their own report. So they get with finance and they actually put the line items in that report that they want and it's at our assessor's fingertips whenever he wants it, as a department head. And then he just ships it over to our finance office and they can generate what they need from it. So it's a great way for the different departments to control their own budgets and do some changes in there if they want to. And to generate these reports, it's just a matter of clicking button that's there.
What's the cost of this and when are you looking at doing this, next cycle or?
We're not sure we're gonna do it yet.
No, it has to go to the workshop and the, this is a full encompassing software. So it takes us everywhere from this paper stuff that you guys are using today through AP, cash receipting, payroll, all of it. It's $40,000, $5,000 a year. And they're willing to work with us, but right now, no one but four people in the county have access to our accounting system. And my staff, yes, my staff is overworked. They're trying to keep up with things. In this system, we move from, they're physically creating claims with tons of paper this thick, walking it over to my AP clerk who then manually goes through all of that information, provides corrections, whatever she needs to do to enter it into the system, to send it to me. Mind you, it goes from a clerk in their office to a department head, to my AP clerk, to me, to Julia, to a commissioner. You imagine the staff time that goes into handling one claim. This is electronic, somebody uploads it in there, they pass it up the chain of command, someone else looks at it from... they pass it up the chain of command, someone else looks at it from their desk, that's their next step. And you meet those internal poll control requirements within moments and the department heads will have overnight access. As soon as it batches for that night, the next day, they see the real-time impact on the...
Plus it shows transparency.
Yes, and turn it on for the public.
Charlene, what are we currently paying per year for CASL?
$12,768 a year for PDF documents and for people to use and not be able to do any budgeting in it. No analysis, no expenditure trends. Sorry. I'm sorry, everybody, I know that I'm a little bit passionate about this. For me, I'm used to something a little bit more productive than using spreadsheets. And the previous finance director was great with Excel and spreadsheets. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money for me to be sitting at my salary manually doing these calculations. When this software will do it with a click of a button, the commission will have access to all that information. She's making departmental decisions countywide. We don't need her to have to call the AP clerk and say, "Can you give me a PDF document so I can manually do calculations to figure out what I wanna do for this?"
And we literally, as commissioners, we're handed, from SENA, we're handed a basket every week. And it's basically the accounts payable invoices. And it's sometimes this thick and we look through each one. And if we're doing our job, we literally look through the invoices sometimes as well and look at what, you know, the expenditures of the county. And it literally takes a lot of time. And we'd still wanna look through those invoices. But the nice part is on these reports, the invoices are generated right in with the pay sheet. So you can literally scan the invoice right there as well. Everything is at your fingertips.
But all the data still has to be put in, right?
It's done, user, you wouldn't believe how easy it is. In fact, one of the things...
Is it scanned in or...
Some of it scanned in, it's uploaded. Oh, by the way, countywide storage for paper documents. Can you imagine the deteriorate, deterioration rate of capital projects like Brookings Head Start over 10 years? We're required to keep those capital projects 10 years on paper? The deterioration and the cost, we're struggling for office space for all of our departments and we have an abundance of offices sitting with boxes of paper that our records are deteriorating in that could be stored in this cloud. Please let me show you this example. Where were your property tax dollars spent for in the last five years? Who do you think would like to go on to our county website and be able to see where their tax dollars were used? At their own time, at their own schedule, it's updated each time we put cash receipting in. It batches overnight and it's available to people that have access, different views.
A lot of this can be put up on the website so the public can look at it as well and know where their tax dollars are being spent. And I think that's cool.
Just for clarification, the slide you have up there is not current county.
No, that's Klamath County. I picked that one because of his comment earlier.
Just an example.
Yeah, it's just an example. But right now, in contrast, if I may, the information that is, can someone help me with this? Shared with the county, our current communication with the... Boy, I am just nervous.
The cost of the software, does it also cover the storage, the cost of the storage of the data? So that's all encompassed in it?
Yes.
That's pretty good.
And they're actually willing to come, we wouldn't do it in one bang. We're gonna do it in stages, like three different stages.
Makes sense.
And they will come and get everyone up to speed on that stage before they move to the next stage. So it's, it'll actually take, I think they said, what'd they say, Julie? A year and a half to get this fully implemented into the county?
And that's included in the whole cost of it.
That's included in the cost.
So right now, here's what you guys get. Department heads are using this to run their departments from. This is in contrast to what I was just showing you. This is what our county leaders are using to manage oversight for the county.
Charlene.
Okay. This is what we've had for, SENA, do you remember the implementation date? I think it's 20 years. This is what...
It was in place for Julie's...
Yeah. And Julie's been here 22 years, I believe she said 20 years. But this is what our current reports are in contrast to what I showed you a minute ago. And this is the public's view. This is what our public has to look through to see what their tax dollars were used for. And the department heads, that's all they have to work with in creating their budgets. So the strategic plan that the commission is in the middle of for us, that software that I showed you can be used for the ruling document and each department can tie their budgets and their strategic planning into the objectives that are defined in that strategic plan. So I just wanted to leave you on that note because I think you can tell I'm a little bit passionate about getting this fixed. But I, we have our meeting dates. I thank you very much for your time. I know it does sound like a lot of money, but please understand that the, some kind of a change needs to take place and this one empowers everyone to have authority over their own budget, access to it, and transparency.
Will it increase the workload for the individual departments or...
It will lessen the workload. Those manual documents and the storage that we're required to keep, all of that's gonna go away within a matter of time with this. People won't have to manually walk paper claim forms over to SENA anymore. They can create them in their place, load up the verification. She can sit at her desk, review that material, do her part. It will go to the next person. If it's approved and it balances, we have that internal control, checks can be printed. And by the way, our payroll clerk is entering time for the whole county manually from paper sheets.
Yeah. From paper sheets, we enter our payroll. This has an automated, you do your timesheet right from your desk and your department head verifies it as you do.
So each individual employee could go on and do their own timesheet?
Exactly, yeah.
And then the supervisor reviews it, which is a system I'm used to.
That's, that's what this does.
Exactly, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that we're doing it that way.
Yeah, like Julie's in there manually entering all the stuff.
The team we have here have been trying so hard and they're overworked and they've just been doing it this way for a long time. And I think that it costs the county more money to pay for a $12,000 software than we can do with one that handles all of these things that we're talking about. We're having a workshop on the 27th of this month to review the benefits and evaluate that software.
So by saving time, it sounds like that's what we're looking at. You're going to be giving these individuals that, say, the payroll clerk or whatever, other duties?
Right now, I'm not sure, right now, the office is not being run efficiently. By standard business practice, bank reconciliation should be happening in the first week of the following month. It's taking three months for them to get done. Julie's time is absorbed with entering paper documents and doing the long, the archaic way of doing her payroll liabilities and her manual reports for the federal and state government and everything. I believe that will free up their time, provide efficiency and transparency and reduce our need for another person in my office.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't suck all the oxygen out of the room?
No, don't worry.
Great direction, good work.
Thank you.
So moving along, are there any budget committee questions and comments? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, could I address a question that came up a little bit earlier from Mr. Thode about the assessors?
You have to come up here.
Yes, come on up to the podium.
Watch your head, Jim.
Mr. Thode, you mentioned earlier that the budget committee had addressed the assessors' software system. And I appreciate the progressive thinking of last year's budget committee with regards to the assessor's office and their software system. And you did budget money for the, for a new system. We're still in the review process to where we're looking at the potential systems. I think I mentioned to you at budget time, there's two, basically two potential systems in the state of Oregon, we're still reviewing those. We expect to make a decision in December. Either company is ready to begin the project in January. The project with either company, it'll take it 18 months to fully implement. Although with either company, we would probably be collecting taxes on the new system by next year. So although it's an 18-month project to fully implement the new system, we're ready to be, get going and we'll be bringing a contract to the commissioners in December. So I guess the thing that you said was, didn't we resolve that? You did, in a sense, but it takes a while.
I should've said address it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Thode.
Any questions on that?
No.
No, sir?
Thank you.
Thanks, Assessor Thode.
Any other budget committee questions or comments by anyone?
I appreciate the effort of one last comment that we're moving this along earlier this year instead of the last minute. I think we discussed that. This is a very good timeframe to wrap this up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So our next meeting, oh, I'm sorry, no, I just would, we're gonna get a recap email with the schedule we outlined today.
Absolutely, we'll get schedules for you guys. I just would ask that you email me with the business card I gave you and we'll get a recap. JJ's got his fingers on the minutes, right? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So our next meeting is January 22nd. That's our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Mid-year review.
And we'll see everybody then. Any last questions or comments?
Nope.
And we'll call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.